Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I'll now call to order the City of Kelowna Regular Council Meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2019. I'd like to acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Seal K'okanogon people. This meeting is open to the public and all representations to council form part of the public record. A live audio and video feed is being broadcast and recorded by Castanet, and a delayed broadcast is shown on Shaw Cable. Counselor, can I get confirmation of our meeting minutes from September 30th, 2019, please? Moved by Counselor Wildridge, seconded by Counselor Dawn. Any errors or omissions? Seeing not, all in favor? Opposed? Minutes confirmed. So now we can get into the development application reports and related bylaws. Item 3.1 is the first, and this is for property located at 2568 KLO Road. And this is to consider support of an application to the Agricultural Land Commission for non-adhering residential use, to use an existing additional dwelling on the subject property as temporary farmworker housing to accommodate six temporary farmworkers. And we have Laura Bentley for this report. Laura?
Thank you, your worship. The application was received by the city on June 27th of this year. And just as a bit of background, there was a previously submitted farm help permit associated with the application. And that was in progress when the new ALC regulations came into effect earlier this year, which prompted the need for the application to be considered by the ALC. So there's two parts to it, and we're here today for council to consider the non-adhering residential use application. It was considered by the city's agricultural advisory committee in August of this year, and they recommended support for the application. And so today, it's here for council's consideration. If supported today, then it would go forward to the ALC. The subject property is in the southeast Kelowna city sector, located on KLO Road between Hall Road and East Kelowna Road. It is within the ALR, and there's ALR to the northeast and south of the property as well. And the property has a future land use designation of resource protection. And it's also beside the Hall Road area to the northwest. So it's a bit of a mix of residential and agricultural in the area, as well as the Gulf Course immediately to the south. And the property is zoned A1. There are three houses, or what have been used as houses, on the property, and I'll get into a little bit more detail about that in a moment. This application was triggered by the need to bring the property into compliance with city bylaws. And the current owners, as I mentioned, applied for a farm help permit to allow for one of the houses to be used for temporary farmworker housing. They also decommissioned one of the houses in 2018 as part of the requirements to bring the property into compliance. And they've been working with development planning staff over the last couple of years with regard to these efforts. And so today, we are looking at allowing an existing dwelling on the property to be used for up to six temporary farmworkers. That would be the house in the middle of the property. So just as a bit of background on the houses that are on the property, Dwelling 1 is on the west side of the property, and this was built in 1979. And it was permitted under the condition that one of the dwellings on the property, this was the second dwelling on the property at the time, would be used for farm help or for family only, and that was through an affidavit with the property owner at the time. And then the second house in the middle of the property was built in 2001, and that was constructed under the condition that one of the existing dwellings on the property be demolished or decommissioned. And so that was not done at the time with the previous owner, but the current owners did decommission Dwelling Number 3 on the east side of the property in 2018. So there's that element to bring the property into compliance. And now they're proposing to have that second dwelling used for temporary farmworker housing. Looking at the farming operations, the owners currently own or operate a total of just over 31 hectares of land for cherry and apple orchards in Kelowna. And so they're proposing that this house be used for six temporary farmworkers, which help with their farming operations across the different orchards that they have. The footprint and the employment contract requirements associated with temporary farmworker housing that are outlined in the zoning bylaw have been met, and the application also meets our official community plan farm protection guidelines, which speak to using existing dwellings on a farm unit for temporary farmworker housing instead of building new housing. As mentioned, this meets the intent of the official community plan to preserve productive agricultural land. Agriculture still is the primary use on the parcel, and the applicant has demonstrated the need to have temporary farmworker housing, or pardon me, to have temporary farmworkers. And then the temporary farmworker housing itself meets the development permit guidelines for that housing. And so staff are recommending support of the proposed non-adhering residential use. It's in general accordance with our municipal regulations and guidelines for temporary farmworker housing. The agricultural advisory committee recommended support. And should council support this today, it would be forwarded to the ALC for consideration. That concludes staff comments.
Thank you very much, Laura. Questions to staff, starting with Counselor Singh.
So Laura, the two houses that are on the property will house, one of the houses will house, six temporary farmworkers will be working in that agricultural district, right? In that area, in southeast Kelowna area?
That's correct, your worship. The applicants have orchards across Kelowna. Most of them are located within southeast Kelowna, so they would be primarily working within that sector.
Your worship, I'd like to offer a comment as soon as my council colleagues have finished.
Are you prepared to move the recommendation?
Absolutely.
Seconded by Counselor Seaborn. Go ahead, Counselor Singh.
Your worship, I just wanted to tell you and my council colleagues, I went there, saw the location. They've taken 10 acres of adjacent land and replanted it all and built a beautiful orchard. Great need for the six temporary farmworkers. I highly support this going forward.
Seeing no further comments, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. So now we're on to item 3.2 on the agenda, and this is a rescindment. This is for an application located at 935 Mayfair Road, and to rescind all three readings given to rezoning bylaw number 11561, and direct staff to close the file. Counselor, do we have any questions on this item? Seeing not, I can't remember, do we go straight to a bylaw reading? Or no, we don't? We just do, I need a motion then. So moved by Counselor Seaborn, seconded by Counselor Wildridge, that we rescind first, second, and third reading of bylaw number 11561, and direct staff to close the file. Oh, no, sorry. My apologies. That's item 3.3. Getting ahead of myself. Oh, yeah, never mind. So we'll deal with the motion first, and then we'll go to the bylaw reading afterwards. So all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. So now, item 3.3 deals with the bylaw again for 935 Mayfair Road, and to rescind first, second, and third reading of bylaw number 11561, and direct staff to close the file.
Moved by Counselor Singh, set up by Counselor Wildridge, that first, second, and third readings given to bylaw number 11,561 be rescinded.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, on now to item 3.4. This is to consider an update to Section 8 Parking and Loading zoning bylaw for various parking regulations as it pertains to development in our community. And we have Adam Cheka here to give this presentation. Adam, whenever you are ready.
These proposed amendments are meant to incorporate several outstanding actions that were directed by staff, or directed to staff from council, and as part of a number of higher-level policy documents, including the official community plan, the healthy housing strategy, the council adopted car share strategy, previously adopted healthy housing strategies, the Kelowna Community Climate Action Plan, Imagine Kelowna, and the pedestrian and bicycle master plan, all of these which have action items towards making amendments to the parking sections that were incorporated with these proposals. The proposed changes are meant to modernize parking regulations, minimize the spillover into sensitive areas, alter minimum and maximum parking regulations, consider alternative transportation options like car sharing, increase cycling infrastructure, in order to promote more sustainable forms of development. This includes more cost-effective and land-efficient forms of development, which supports the envisioned urban structure, and also supports further public transit investments, encouraging alternative transportations, and mitigating the environmental impacts of various parking facilities. Here's the outline of the number of the highlighted proposed changes, and we'll be open for questions afterwards. Staff reviewed many other municipalities and development of these regulations to inform our recommendations. Further, the proposed changes have been informed from this research, as well as with staff experience with multiple development applications and consultation with the Urban Development Institute. Staff have consulted with UDI and met with them to review these regulations a number of times, and made adjustments in order to reflect industry trends. Now to get into the details of some of the parking, specifically secondary suite parking configurations are meant to be updated. This was in lieu of a rule that the bylaw has, parking cannot be located in the front yard setback. And you can see on the next section here. What that meant was led to a lot of confusion, so this configuration diagram is meant to show what is and isn't permitted. And the purpose of these is to make sure, like you can see the one on the not permitted is not to have frontages dominated by asphalt, but to reasonably accommodate secondary suite parking on driveways. The universal accessible stalls, the new B.C. Building Code eliminated any requirements for accessible parking stalls, and the responsibility of regulating this fell on local governments. And we had a letter from the ministry that said that we needed to incorporate these into our proposed zoning bylaw. And a lot of these regulations come from their recommendations that should be put into zoning bylaws, as well as other best practices and accessibility requirements. These numbers you can see on the screen here are slightly more progressive than the old B.C. Building Code, where approximately 50 stalls were required before a universal accessible stall was required. And in this stall, in this bylaw, we're also proposing to add van accessible parking to incorporate and to be more inclusive of various members of our community. Another big change in the parking is to provide various incentives to promote alternative transportation corridors, or alternate transportation options. The first one is for car share, and the regulation is for every car share provided to have a five-stall reduction in the minimum amount of parking, up to a maximum of 20%. And this is meant to be provided onsite or within 100 meters of the subject property. Another parking incentive is bicycles. We'll go over the new numbers in a later slide, but if development is to provide bicycle parking over and above the new expanded minimums, then another five-stall vehicle reduction could be applied, again to a maximum of 20%. Rental housing, staff are proposing to make an overall reduction on rental housing and to utilize the province's new tools of rental zoning. And if a developer would agree to zone their property for rental only, within the urban centers, staff are recommending a 20% reduction and a 10% reduction outside of urban centers. And the main reason for this is that rental housing is much more easier when there's a single landlord of, have new tenants that they can control if they have new cars or not, and they can more efficiently manage it in a parking pool, as well as then each unit doesn't have to worry about a future strata owner potentially needing a parking spot for resale. Offsite parking covenants in the existing bylaw, staff are proposing to delete this. Staff feel that it's better to be handled with parking variances and/or the cash and lieu program, mainly because offsite parking covenants really isolate and sterilize lots for parking, surface parking in perpetuity. And a good example of one we did recently was the Shore, where there was an agreement between Fortis and the applicant, and the city provided a variance based upon that agreement. Landscape islands, the main difference with the existing bylaw versus the new bylaws is about the same amount of landscaping as proposed, except for the existing bylaw didn't mention how landscaping had to be configured. And after looking at many other municipalities, it was determined that in order to beautify and to make our surface parking lots more environmentally friendly and aesthetic, that we should regulate where some landscaping occurs along the drive aisles. And the main one is a maximum of 15 stalls before a landscape island is required in a row of parking. Tandem parking is currently permitted in the following categories. The existing bylaw does allow tandem parking in multifamily situations. Staff have consulted with UDI and many stakeholders on this. Originally, we were proposing a outright ban on tandem parking for townhouses or for multifamily. However, after consultation, staff feel that it was more appropriate to have restrictions on tandem parking outside the urban core, because inside the urban core tandem parking could still, households could still have theoretically one vehicle, and better utilize transit and walkability within our core. So therefore, the proposal was restrict tandem parking outside the urban core. Residential parking rates, there are many of them are meant to be amended. It was also to clarify visitor parking is an addition to the base requirement. There's an addition for lockoff units. A lot of lower mainland municipalities are seeing a lot of these multifamily lockoff units. And it's similar to what their proposals are, is to count them as a dwelling for the purpose of visitor stalls. Again, in visitor stalls, we've seen a number of complaints and situations towards the size of vehicle stalls. So in the new bylaw, it's proposed that visitor stalls must be a full size, and that's mainly due to the potential for anybody to visit with any size vehicle. So visitor stalls must, in the new bylaw, be full size. And the new rates here for the C4 and C7 zones, right now, it's at a one stall per unit. And this table basically reads for 0.8 stalls, or 0.8 parking spaces per bachelor unit, 0.9 for one bedroom and one stall per unit. For all other zones that are within an urban center, there's proposed to be a reduction, and the rates are 0.9 for bachelor, 1 for one bedroom, 1.25 for two-bedroom, and 1.5 for two-bedroom or more. And then outside urban centers, the parking rate for residential multifamily is meant to stay the same as the existing bylaw. Commercial industrial land, staff are proposing to reduce the number of commercial industrial parking rates, as well as simplify the commercial land use categories. Staff recommended a consistent rate for the C4 and C7 parking rate, so that there's a consistent commercial rate across the municipality. With the exception of downtown commercial, staff contemplated not having any parking for commercial requirements in the downtown. However, it was felt that it was more appropriate to have an interim step and to have a reduction. And the reason why we're having even a further, proposing a further reduction is this is the only area in our community from Walk Score that's designated as a Walker's Paradise. I'll show the map here. So this is an Area 1. And basically, this is our area where we're trying to promote the most active transportation, has parks, services, commercial. And Area 2 was an area that was previously in the zoning bylaw that got eliminated in an amendment years ago. And the purpose of Area, there's an exemption in parking requirements for Area 2 only for buildings under four stories. And the purpose of this is to incentivize properties along that historic block of Bernard, to invest in their properties, to upkeep, to do minor additions, as there's no real parking available for them onsite. And so this was meant to be in there, to have an exemption for that area for parking. Bicycle parking rates and standards, the main changes, one of them is reducing or changing the language from Class 1 and Class 2. Class 1 is meant to be long-term bicycle stalls. Class 2 is short-term bicycle stalls. And short-term bicycle rates are meant to change from the way that is currently calculated from a number of stalls per dwelling unit or per gross floor area to a number of stalls per building entrance. And the long-term bicycle rates are proposed to increase from .5 to .75, as well with other best practices from other municipalities. And from the research, is that a regulation that be added, that 50% of these long-term bicycle stalls be ground-oriented or ground-anchored, so it must be in a horizontal fashion, where 50% could be in a vertical fashion, let's say hung up on a wall. And lastly, with the active transportation incentives, or requirements actually, is a proposal for end-of-trip facilities. And end-of-trip facilities are facilities that are needed for, to support active transportation at end of people's trips. So when they get to work, and it's meant for employees, to have toilets, sinks, showers, storage lockers, bike repair station, bike wash stations. And this has helped to facilitate and incentivize our goal of motor split and to incentivize active transportation. So overall, staff are recommending support for the new parking section and loading section. It's consistent with the Imagine Kelowna and various other council directions, as well as various other council policies. And that concludes my presentation, worship, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much, Adam. There are some questions, starting with Counselor Dawn.
Thanks, worship. Thanks, Adam. Lots of stuff in there. That's quite a comprehensive report. So maybe I'll comment on the rental only, zoning, and with the parking variance. I appreciate the creativity and how staff have looked at a way to incentivize, essentially that's going to come from developers can suggest that or can have that option to them. Is that kind of what you're suggesting? Because it's not really officially listed in our OCP at this point. So how would that, is that, would that be a zoning requirement they would have to go through to get that zoning, or how would that work?
Oh, your worship, do you mean for the rental housing zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be proposed that we would create, if the first person who would do it, would create a rental subzone, similar to retail cannabis or retail liquor stores, and it would be C4 rental.
Okay, so that would be within that. Okay, so then the only comments I got from the public was in regards to the car share. And just, was there any consultation done with our car share providers in the community on, as we came up and drafted this bylaw?
Yes, your worship, we had extensive consultation with moto, especially in relation to a number of development applications that have currently utilized car sharing, and we've been using it in variances in lieu of putting it into the bylaw. Specifically, they like where we're going, we're supporting car share. I think specifically they wanted to expand the distance away from a site where the car share could be located. They want a little bit more flexibility. However, staff, we picked 100 meters, because the recommendation from staff's perspective was that we wanted it to be still incentivized for the people that lived in that building to use alternative transportation, not just a community benefit if it was located, let's say a kilometer away.
So was there any thought, and that was exactly the feedback I got, so was there any thought in regards to matching it closer to the transit-oriented developments, where you have a 400-meter buffer? Was that given, any consideration given, just because we have that bonus essentially when there's a close to, or we encourage it, people to be close to transit within 400 meters, so?
Yes, your worship, we did look at it. I think the two numbers that we were looking at between for recommendations was 400 meters and 100 meters. 400 meters is the five-minute walk radius circle, so it does make sense if it was 400 meters. However, 400 meters, and we look at it at various urban centers, is quite a distance away from areas, and we looked at where that distance could be relative to the development application. If it was, let's say, in downtown, it could be on the other side of the highway. Our recommendation was that it would be closer to the actual development, so the actual development would benefit from the car share.
So is this something you'd be open to look at later if it is not used as often as we want to see it used?
Oh, correct, your worship. And also that number, 100 meters, is variable. So if an applicant wants to do it 125 or 150, and there's a good reason, maybe there's a rapid bus transit station right next door, just outside the 100 meters, it could be easily a variance application, and we can definitely review this bylaw at any time. And if council is approving variances after variances, then we can look at expanding that number.
Okay, so this could be, okay, so that's a great option, actually. So people, this is the intent, so you're starting off almost more conservative at 100 meters. meters. Their request was higher, but you can come, a developer could come with a variance if that was what it took to do that kind of thing. So the tough thing is that sometimes the market quite isn't set yet for the developer to know how the market could work and that. And that would be more the car share provider would be looking for that nudge. So I think, is there enough understanding within the industry, you feel, right now to grasp this, or is there still an opportunity there?
Oh, yes, your worship. I think, especially because we've been doing a number of variances that are based off a car share.
Right.
And most of those car shares have been located on-site. So this would be, would have been moot. So there's not very many that, so far, that would have utilized the off-site one.
Okay.
So most of the communities, and most developers really want the car share on their own site, because it really benefits their own development.
Right, okay, so I'll leave that one there. That's, that works for me, kind of thing. The debate between C4 to C7, I know that was discussed last time, I think it was a development close to Prospera Place. Is that the same, that was a C4 area, that's where we have that in town, is that correct? Like, there's almost a historic type of parking requirements that are almost archaic, is what I understand, is that, is this related to C4 and C7, or no?
No, your worship, specifically related to Prospera is a comprehensive development zone. So it was a zone specific for that.
Okay, so it's not connected. Okay, sounds good. I just wanted to clarify that wasn't the conversation we're having today. Okay, so I think you perfectly matched all those plans through this bylaw, so thanks for doing that.
Councillor Singh.
Your worship, Adam, when you say tandem parking will be allowed outside the urban core, you mean outside the downtown area, in developments outside, as a further field?
Your worship, we're saying tandem parking could be located within the urban core, within the urban core.
It could be located within the urban core.
Yes, and the urban core is more broad than just the urban centers. So it would currently go from, you know, the lake, south almost to Mission Creek, and into Rutland, and up the highway, 97 corridor.
I'm not a huge proponent of tandem parking, so I would caution about the overuse of this, because ultimately, what happens is they land up on the street. Thank you.
Councillor Hart.
Thank you, Adam. I'm sort of going the same where councillor Singh goes, because I remember many, I want to talk about tandem parking, get some clarification, because I know we have many, many council meetings here, and I can, I won't name them, but some that I remember. So the neighbors came and said the tandem parking is just not working, because they, you know, one car comes in, the next one's leaving the next day, and they were all on the street. And we've heard that over and over again. So like, I wanted to chat about that, and I wanted to ask you, okay, so a single dwelling house, okay, so you got tandem parking there, because of secondary suite, those are going to be mostly, we know where they're going to be, but the short-term rental accommodations, I don't get that. Are you talking about residential? Like, I guess I need clarification. I just didn't understand that second, that second point.
The short-term rental accommodation for tandem parking is meant to be similar to a suite parking. So if you saw that diagram earlier, that a short-term rental parking could be allowed in the driveway, similar to a secondary suite.
Yeah. Okay, well, there you go. Then we are, depending on what it is, there's, you know, tandem parking on the street again. Did, like, and I guess this is the only thing on the whole report that I kind of felt that, and I'm just wondering the whole reasoning for that, because we've heard that over and over about tandem parking, that people just, they don't use it. And I know I've written down some of the areas where we, where we had that, and there was, there was evidence of it. So I'm just not sure why staff went that way.
Your worship, tandem parking was probably one of the major talking points and considerations that staff had, and was one of the biggest, I guess, sticking points with the Urban Developments Institute as well. We looked at saying we should just not have tandem parking in our entire urban center, or sorry, in our entire city. However, after consultation with UDI, there was seen as some townhouse developments that are within our urban core, specifically urban centers, like within South Pendosee or downtown, or Capri-Lamar or Rutland, that could utilize one vehicle, similar to our infill housing that only has one vehicle parking. So staff feel that allowing tandem parking essentially is, is more permissive than just a single car parking within our kind of urban core, where then, where we see a lot of the troubles with tandem parking is outside the core. So in the Pawns, or in Kyrshner Mountain, or Black Mountain, or Wildon. And this bylaw is proposing to restrict that. So those areas that are not within like, close walking distances to services are meant to restrict tandem parking.
Okay, so, good, okay, so let me ask you a question. So in an area like Gordon and Casorso, there seems to be in one, in one development, we allowed quite a bit of tandem parking, but now the overflow is going on to Casorso and the street on the side of that. And we've had numerous complaints, and I have had too, and I've sent them in. So would that be an area that we've already allowed that? So we're kind of, that's kind of run down the wash, right? But in the future, are you saying that that area would not be allowed tandem parking?
Well, that area specifically, worship, I think is up for discussion, especially with the new official community plan. I think that area is right on the border of what is considered the urban core.
Okay.
And so what we consider the urban core definitely could, you know, boundary adjustments could happen with the new official community plan, but it is, that area is specifically kind of right on that fringe area.
And on the short-term rental accommodation, when, when that comes forward, it's always parking, 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 parking. So is that the, why you did that? Because you were having a parking problem with the short term, or, see, I didn't, I really didn't get that either, so, or is that strictly residential, short-term rental accommodation residential? I wasn't sure about that.
It was meant to just clarify what the existing rules are, because it wasn't put into the existing bylaw with short-term rentals, that short-term rentals were meant to mimic what secondary suite parking was. The only difference in this proposed changes related to short-term rentals is the multifamily. In the existing short-term rental rules, if you have a multifamily unit that you're proposed to do short-term rentals in, theoretically, even if you're in a parcade, you're supposed to have an extra parking space. And staff are recommending, in that particular case, that that section be eliminated, because multifamily developments that have parcades can restrict short-term rentals themselves through strata bylaws. So that's the only change related to short-term rentals.
Okay, okay, well, I.
Hey, Long Councillor, Terry Barton has further comments as well.
Thank you.
Your worship, if I could just add to the conversation, again, just to stress the point that we spent a lot of time with our development committee on this, and had numerous discussions. From their perspective, tandem parking allows a degree of creativity to take place within their units, specifically in the, in the urban center. It, it allows them to hit a degree of affordability, that if you think of the other consequences of them always having to do a double-car garage, is a lot, not only is it more money, but also it is, affects form and character, and depending upon the perspective, you could end up with a townhouse row that is quite dominated by housing. Our development community doesn't necessarily want to deliver that. We don't necessarily want to have to require that. And so in certain cases in the urban setting, they felt that that creativity was necessary. I think the development community would also acknowledge that it's a bit of a leadership and cultural issue, that not everybody in Kelowna is, is at that spot, and there's going to be a learning that when you buy into one of these developments with tandem, most of our developers did acknowledge simply that it's a little bit different than the traditional normal setup, but they certainly want the opportunity to allow some education to happen. When Adam and I looked at all the other major urban centers that are larger than us, the Vancouver, Calgary, Edmonton, Victorias of the world, there wasn't one that, that did not allow tandem in the urban areas. And so we, again, when we were at, when, when UDI asked us the question, and Adam and I looked at, and looked at and talked about it within our planning department, we thought that it was a reasonable trade-off to be able to allow that creativity in the urban center. And then in areas where walkability is really poor, and the alternative transportation is not there, to simply come down with no tandem in those areas.
Okay.
So that's kind of a little bit of the background and the pushback that's.
And I sort of agree with that. I agree with what you said. All I'm saying is that in the other areas, it is, we have seen that it just doesn't work, and that they park on the street. But what you're saying about the urban areas, I do agree. And I think, I think you've explained it well. But I really think we've got to keep our eye on the other, because I go past it all the time, and I see one car in the tandem parking, and everybody else is on the other two streets on the other side of Gordon Drive. So I'm just, I'm just cautioning you like councillor Singh. Thank you.
Councillor Sevan.
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Adam, for the report. Question, I guess, with regards to the C4, C7 zoning, and what's being called for is .9 parking spaces for one bedroom, one for two-bedroom, and one and a half for three-bedroom. What were the rates prior to this? Just for reference.
So yes, your worship, on that middle row, so that's for any non-C4, non-C7 zones, so all the RM zones. They were the column beside it rate. So for a one-bedroom, or for a bachelor, it was 1.25; for a one-bedroom, it was 1.25; and for a two-bedroom was 1.5, and for a three-bedroom was two or more, for two spaces, sorry.
Okay, so I guess what we're moving towards then is really to the point that even with the one-bedroom, that you're having less than one spot per unit?
Yes, and one extra wrinkle into, into, currently, the way the, the zoning bylaw was written, is that residential or visitor parking was incorporated in the previous amount as well. And so now that we're separating and making it an and, so technically on the right-hand column there, so outside the urban centers, we're actually requiring more parking, because now we have the standard rate plus visitor. So the middle rate is, is actually a net lower than the previous, but by, not by that much.
Okay. I think I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, obviously, the visitor is an important component, which we tend to have a lot of dialogue and feedback from people on. But from a pure unit standpoint, it, it's actually moving to below a parking spot for a unit. So if you had, I was really trying to see if there was a real-life example, if you had a 50-unit configuration, what does it work out to be the net parking of that 50-unit? But it depends on how many one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms. But I just, my concern, I guess, is that, I guess the course of action in previous developments has been variances was the way to deal with it. And certainly, when we've dealt with some student housing in certain areas, whether it be micro suites or whatever, it was quite clear from that type of build in that particular area, that the bylaws were, there was too much parking, that wasn't being used, and there are spaces that were empty. And I guess that was our way to handle it, is through a variance. My question here is, when you're coming to a more populated area, are we going to create a crunch on parking when that's not necessarily our intent? But there are certain locations where it's, it's a bigger problem than others. So I guess that's, that's my question, or is that maybe the intent?
No, that's, that's, the answer to that is mostly on those developments in, on Academy Way with all the student housing, those would all still, under this proposed rate, they would all still need variances. They still wouldn't meet these, this current rate. So most of the RM zones that are in that middle column, would only, the only developments that would help it would be if you were sure, probably in our existing bylaw, by less than five stalls. It's not a huge reduction, but it is, it is a reduction, and it's meant to be on, on the margin. So it's not meant to be a wholesale radical lowering, but it is meant to be somewhat lower. So those, any bylaw that had like, 20-plus stall variances, would still need variances. It just be, would be a less, it'd be maybe a 15 or a 10-stall variance.
Okay, and then trying to understand that, then if you had the revised parking regulations, and then if you were to, if a developer was to provide in excess of the expanded bicycle parking, they could potentially have a reduction of five spots, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if they added hypothetically one more bicycle spot, then they can remove five more parking spots?
Your worship, so the current, well, the proposed rate for bicycle is .75 per dwelling unit, and then the bonus is based upon number of bedrooms. So bachelor would be one stall, one-bedroom would be 1.25 stalls, two-bedroom would be 1.5, and three-bedrooms would be two. So in some cases, it's more than double the amount of bicycle parking that would be necessary over and above the already increased requirements of bicycle parking. So it'd be a significant bicycle parking, and even the increase in bicycle parking, developers are going to really have to look at, even just on the base requirement, because it does take up a significant amount of room inside like parcades, for example, especially when we have the 50% required on a ground-anchored. So it's not a, a small incentive. They would definitely have to work for that incentive, and it eats up a lot of area, especially inside of parcades.
Okay, no, that helps answer that question, so I appreciate that. I think that's all I have. I guess my, my concern is just that if we already have certain areas that have parking issues, is this going to make it worse? And I'm not, I'm not sure.
Councillor Wildridge.
Thanks, your worship. Thanks, Adam. I was really excited when I read this report yesterday. I'm going to channel my councillor Hodge at the moment here, and look at our landscape islands changes. Does this mean we're going to see more green when it comes to our grade parking, and will we increase our canopy cover by these changes?
Your worship, so the landscape changes are a slight increase in from what, and it depends on the situation, because we're being more restricted in terms of configuration. So in some situations, it'll be more, some situation might be a tiny bit less. But overall, it should be more, especially, you'll notice it more, the previous regulations, you could just have landscaping in the rear of a property. And that would count for your entire landscaping, and your whole surface parking lot could be no landscaping inside of it. So this is making more regulations on where it locates on-site.
Perfect, thank you. And I'm prepared to move this and speak to it when ready.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sevan.
Thanks, worship. Sorry, I had one more question, Adam, that came to me. Also, just to confirm if the maximum amount of parking that can be provided, so these are more minimums that we're talking about, but the maximum is 125%?
Yes, your worship, so one of the proposals is to change the way the maximum works. In terms of the current bylaw, it's adding all the land uses together, and then saying 125% on top of that. In this case, we're proposing to say there's a maximum per use, and it's meant to reflect what the existing rate is, plus 125%. And then did the math for each use, so that the maximum would stay kind of the same as it is now. So there would be a bigger range, in terms of the, slightly on the lower side would be lower, but the maximum would still be kind of the same as the existing bylaw.
Okay, so if you had someone with a two-bedroom unit, they could potentially, and the developer could build two spaces per unit.
Yes.
Yeah, because I think for market housing, sometimes that's still desirable. Hopefully, it's changing in the future, but I know that's sometimes a key factor when they're actually selling their units.
So councillor Wildridge is moving. The staff recommendations are seconded, seconded by councillor Don. Back to you, councillor Wildridge.
Thanks, your worship. I was really excited to read this, because with our priorities of combating climate change and creating more housing attainability, rather, I think these changes are really important, because what we underestimate is the cost of parking and the impact of that when it comes to the financial end of development. And to create change in behaviors, I think that this really helps craft that. I was really excited about the car share programs, the alternate modes, bike parking, and I just think this is a really excellent move in the right direction, so I just want to applaud staff for that.
Councillor Don.
Thanks, your worship. So just a really comprehensive plan coming forward. I have, I think because we've managed to adjust the cost of, that we're charging for our parking stalls within our bylaw, that helps make this easier to attain. The only question I have in my head, and I'm totally fine with this bylaw presentation as it is, but Transit Depot still not being completed with the lack of transit hours, that is part of our understanding. If we're going to allow for more multimotor transportation, those transit hours are still needed. So happy to move this forward, but it is in balance with a few other things on council's agenda as well. And I think just, it reminds me to continue to advocate for more transit hours, because that's the expectation that this is all built through.
Councillor Sevan.
Thanks, your worship. I'll support this as well, but with a little bit of apprehension going forward. As I've commented before, I always have, shouldn't say always, but at times I've issued, even with our pay and loo policy, sometimes where it doesn't necessarily deal with the performance of particular developments, it's, you pay it forward to, to have a reduction, but it might not actually benefit your parking in that particular area at times. So I do want, hope that this can be monitored quite closely, making sure that we're not having some unintended consequences. But as we densify and urbanize, certainly, parking's a major factor, and it's an affordability driver. So for those reasons, I will support it, but I do hope that we monitor this as it rolls out.
Councillor Hart.
Thank you, worship. I'm sort of going down the same line. Of course, I'm going to talk about the tandem parking. I will support this, but I am also apprehensive about some of it. But I really hope that you'd really keep an eye on that, because, only because we have had concerns in the past. So sometimes I say, oh, we've had concerns, and we go this way. So anyway, I'd just really like you to keep an eye on that. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments then, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Adam. So we think, I think there's a bylaw to deal with in regards to those changes now, as we're on item 3.5. This is to give first reading to bylaw number 11850 to amend zoning bylaw number 8,000, section 8, parking and loading.
Moved by Counsel Wildridge, seconded by Counsel Singh. The bylaw number 11,850 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 3.6 is for property located 509 Eldorado Road, and this application seeks to rezone the subject property from the RU1 large lot housing zone to the RU2 medium lot housing zone to accommodate a three-lot subdivision. And we go to Wesley Miles for this report.
Thank you, your worship. As stated, the proposal is to rezone the subject property from RU1 large lot housing to RU2 medium lot housing to accommodate a three-lot subdivision. The application was received on April 9th of 2019. The public consultation notification was done August 14th, and it's in front of council today for initial consideration. If council choose to approve the application, it would move on to the subdivision and building permit stage. Just a quick contextual overview, the subject property is about a block west of Lake Shore Road, near the intersection of Eldorado Road and Lake Shore. The surrounding neighborhood is predominantly single-family and designated single-family and two-family residential. You can see, as per the map there, there is a few properties that have already gone to RU2 and RU6 in the general neighborhood. Stay closer look aerial photo at the subject property with the existing single-family dwelling, detached garage and pool, which will need to be demolished prior to subdivision approval. Site details, had a property is about .38 acres big, about 1,500 meters squared. Again, the proposal is just for a three-lot subdivision for single-family housing. All the proposed lots are about 500 meters squared and have over 15 meters of frontage. There are no variances identified at this time. Just a quick look at the pretty simple layout of the lots, the three lots there, A, B, and C, frontage on to Eldorado Road. The proposal does conform to the official community plan policies for this type of development, the compact urban forum policy and the sensitive infill policy. Because of that, development planning staff are in support of the proposed rezoning application as it meets these policies and is consistent with the future land use designation. That is all from staff. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to staff at this time? Seeing not, is there a mover of the recommendation? Moved by Counsel Dawn, seconded by Counsel Singh. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. So item 3.7 is to give first reading to bylaw number 11938 in order to rezone the subject property from the RU1 large lot housing zone to the RU2 medium lot housing zone.
Moved by Counsel Singh, seconded by Counsel Wildridge. The bylaw number 11,938 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 3.8 is for property located at 1222 Kindry Court, and this is to consider a land use contract discharge to facilitate a proposed two-lot subdivision, and we go back to Laura for this report.
Thank you, your worship. The application was received in June of this year and went through the regular development review process. We're here today for initial consideration. Just a quick note that council may recognize this property. It was before council earlier this year for rezoning application, and the application at the time was with the intent to subdivide. It wasn't noted at the time that there was a land use contract on the property due to just a miss in our mapping, so that's just being addressed now through a land use contract discharge. The land use contract does apply to several other properties, and so staff will bring forward a land use contract termination for those properties later, likely later this year. So the property is just off of Clifton Road, near the north end of Clifton. You can see here, it's quite a large property in a subdivision with large lots that have single-family homes on them. And so the proposal is to subdivide the lot, so the northern portion would be a brand-new lot without a house on it, and then the southern portion, the existing house, would be remaining on that part of the lot, and access would be shared through the existing lot off of Kindry Court. Just recognizing the topography in the area is quite challenging. So staff recommends support of the proposed land use contract discharge. The underlying zone of RR3 Rural Residential, Rural Residential 3 is appropriate, and the subdivision would be consistent with land use policies for the area. And that concludes staff comments.
Thank you very much, Laura. No questions for you at this time? Is there a mover of the recommendation? Moved by Counsel Dawn, seconded by Counsel Singh. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. So item 3.9 is to give bylaw number 11940 first reading in order to discharge land use contract 77-1023 off the subject property located at 1222 Kindry Court.
Moved by Counsel Singh, seconded by Counsel Wildridge. The bylaw number 11,940 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, moving on now to item 3.10 on the agenda. This is for property located at 1940 Underhill, and this is to consider a land use contract discharge, an OCP amendment from the existing OCP designations to the MXR, mixed-use residential commercial designation, and to consider a rezoning from the P2 educational and minor institutional zone to the C4 urban center commercial zone in order to facilitate a mixed-use development. And to explain all this, we go back to Adam.
Thank you, worship. This application was received in June, on June 15th, 2018. It went through a comprehensive traffic analysis with our engineering department and with the Ministry of Transportation, and that was completed on June 10th of this year. And further, the applicant met council policy for public notification by holding a public information session on July 10th at 2170 Harvey Avenue from 5:30 to 7:30. About 80 people attended that open house, and they also notified everybody by contacting them within 15 meters. And today is initial consideration. Should it be forwarded to public hearing, there will be a development permit that needs to be updated. The subject property is centrally located in the midtown urban center. The intention of the OCP and other city policies is to densify our urban centers, and the proposed mixed-use residential building with ground floor commercial meets this objective. The current walk score is 67, and the transit score is 48, is about as high as it goes with Kelowna, because close to the transit exchange and all transit stops. Further, the, on this particular piece of property, there's a land use contract, and it applies only to this property. It was established in the 1970s, and it was to facilitate the institutional use, which was the former school district administration building. The province has mandated all land use contracts be eliminated by 2024. Therefore, this early discharge is consistent with city and provincial policies. On this slide, it shows the future land use designations. The property is currently split between institutional and high-density residential. The high-density residential applies on the east, where the institutional applies on the west. The change in land use designation is supported to the MXR specifically, especially related on the institutional, as that land use designation is really specific for institutional uses like an administration or religious assembly. And changing the OCP designation to MXR is similar to the surrounding context and is consistent with the policies for urban centers, and the resulting C4 zone is the appropriate zone in conjunction with that future land use designation. The initial application shows a two-phase project, with phase one consisting of three six-story wood-framed buildings located on the southern portion of the site. There's one commercial retail unit, relatively small, at 2,300 square feet within building two, and the approximate numbers on this initial proposal is 297 rental residential units. The existing building on-site at the north end is proposed to be retained and used as a marketing and sales office, potentially for phase two development. This is the initial development proposal, the site plan here. The plans include a complete underground parcade. Staff are tracking two potential variances with this current proposal at this early stage. The first potential variance is related to height, to increase the building from four to six stories. The second potential variance is related to parking and potentially bicycle parking, but that all depends on the outcome of the proposed parking and loading section, which was presented to council in a separate report. Staff will continue to work with the developer to work on this issue and to provide recommendations on the merits of the development permit, should the land use be supported by council. Further, with their renderings and their plans, it will all need to be updated for the development permit. This project went through, like I said earlier, a comprehensive traffic study and engineering recommendations. The details is attached to this report. The highlights are on this slide, and they include the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure requirements of adding an eastbound right-hand turn lane off the highway onto Delworth, full frontage improvements along all sides of this property, transit improvements and new bus stops, install a northbound right-hand turn arrow at Springfield and Delworth intersections, and contribute to the potential eastbound and westbound dual lefts. Lane reconfiguration, install a northbound right-hand turn lane at Barron and Delworth intersection, and finally, install full signalization, including left-hand turn lanes for northbound and southbound, and pedestrian signals for the Barron and Underhill intersection. Overall, this proposal meets the intent of mixed-use development policies within the urban center, provides a compact urban growth with mixed uses in an urban center. Overall, staff are recommending support for the proposed rezoning, official community plan amendment, and land use contract discharge application, with one additional condition being recommended by staff, and that is that the applicant prior to final adoption complete an arboretal report, and the purpose of this is to inform staff and the applicant's final design for their development permit, whether there's any potential for existing vegetation to be retained on-site. And staff are recommending the bylaw be forwarded to public hearing. And that concludes my presentation, your worship.
Thank you very much, Adam. Questions, starting with Counsel Dawn.
Thanks, your worship. I worry this is a phased development. Was there any consideration given to a potential CD zone for this development? Just because it seems pretty comprehensive in the package, but was there any staff consideration at that point?
Your worship, potentially, if the project wasn't phased, right now, with the developer not knowing what they want to put on phase one, and whether it would meet the intention of the C4 zone in terms of density and height, it was too early to tell, and six-story buildings are, the intention of those are meant to be incorporated into our standard urban center zone. And so therefore, staff were recommended that C4 should just be applied to the entire site, and then when they know, when the developer knows exactly what they want to propose for phase one, we could consider if they need to go through another rezoning process, then so be it, or utilize the existing C4 zone.
Okay. I'll leave it there.
Any, no further questions? Is there a mover of staff's recommendation? Moved by Counsel Seaman, seconded by Counsel DeHart, and speaking to it, have Counsel Seaman.
Thanks, your worship. No problems at all, the land use makes sense for the area. Very, very keen when the developer comes, somewhat have, hopefully, they'll give some hints of what the entire site is, looking at what's proposed in the package, it's extensive in terms of the height and towers that would actually surround this frame building. So interested on that, but certainly from land use right now, makes perfect sense and no problems.
Seeing no further comments, then, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. We have a number of bylaws here to deal with in regards to this application. So item 3.11 is to give first reading to bylaw number 11941 to discharge the land use contract, LUC 76-1039, again for the property located at 1940 Underhill.
Moved by Counsel Wildridge, seconded by Counsel Singh. The bylaw number 11,941 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 3.12 is to give first reading to bylaw number 11942 to change the future land use designation from MRH, multiple-unit residential high-density and educational major institutional to mixed-use residential commercial.
Moved by Counsel Wildridge, seconded by Counsel Singh. The bylaw number 11,942 has been read a first time, and that the bylaw has been considered in conjunction with the city's financial plan and waste management plan.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. And item 3.13 is to give first reading to bylaw number 11943 in order to rezone the subject property from the P2 educational and minor institutional zone to the C4 urban center commercial zone.
Moved by Counsel Singh, seconded by Counsel Wildridge. The bylaw number 11,943 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 3.14 is for property located at 1932 Summit Drive, and this is to amend the CD3 zone to allow for retail cannabis sales as a primary use, and to rezone the subject property from the CD3 comprehensive development 3 zone to the CD3 RCS, comprehensive development 3 zone, to facilitate the development of a retail cannabis sales establishment. Laura, back to you.
Thank you, your worship. The application was received in November of last year. It was received as part of the initial intake for the retail cannabis sales applications. However, because it required a text amendment, it was essentially processed as a typical development application, rather than being done through the full evaluation for the retail cannabis sales. But they had complete public notification earlier this year, and we're here today for initial consideration. The property is located at the corner of Glenmore Road and Summit Drive in the Glenmore area, within an existing commercial plaza there, and there are some transit and biking options nearby. And the property is generally built out with, well, it is built out, with all the commercial units there, and then the residential in the surrounding area. So the application is to introduce retail cannabis sales to the CD3 zone. That zone applies to this property as well as to the property to the north. However, it would only be a permitted use on this property, which is the commercial portion of the CD3 zone, so that's area two within the zone. And then the specific store that it's proposed to be located in is outlined in red there, so kind of in the center of the site. And the applicant has confirmed, and staff have confirmed, that there are no conflicts in terms of the retail cannabis sales regulations, so the property is more than 500 meters away from the nearest proposed retail cannabis site, and there's no other concerns in terms of parks and schools in the immediate vicinity. So staff are recommending support of the proposed text amendment and rezoning, as it is consistent with relative, relevant policies and regulations. And should council support the proposed rezoning, staff would send a positive recommendation to the Liquor and Cannabis Regulation Branch indicating support as per standard procedure. And that concludes staff comments.
Thank you very much, Laura. No questions for you? Is there a mover of the recommendation? Moved by Counsel Wildridge, seconded by Counsel Dawn. Any discussion? Seeing not, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. So item 3.15 is to give first reading to bylaw number 11944 to amend the CD3 zone to allow for retail cannabis sales as a principal use, again for the property located at 1932 Summit Drive.
Moved by Counsel Wildridge, seconded by Counsel Singh. The bylaw number 11,944 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. And item 3.16 is to give first reading to bylaw number 11945 in order to rezone the subject property from the CD comprehensive development 3 zone to the CD3 RCS, comprehensive development 3, retail cannabis sale zone.
Moved by Counsel Dawn, seconded by Counsel DeHart. The bylaw number 11,945 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, on to item 3.17. This is for property located at 1781 Abbott Street, and this is to consider a heritage designation bylaw to formally protect the Murchison House, and to consider a heritage revitalization agreement to rehabilitate and reconfigure the heritage asset into office commercial space, and to allow two-dwelling housing in a proposed new semi-detached house on the subject property. And we have Barbara Crawford for this report.
Thank you, your worship, and good afternoon, council. I'd first like to provide a brief overview of heritage designation bylaw and heritage revitalization agreement. A heritage designation bylaw ensures the long-term protection of a heritage asset through municipal bylaw. This is the strongest form of protection of a heritage asset. Once the property is designated by the bylaw, the owner is required to obtain a heritage alteration permit to make any exterior alterations in the future. A heritage revitalization agreement is a tool afforded to the municipalities under the Local Government Act. An HRA is a voluntary, formal, written agreement negotiated between the city and the owner of a heritage property regarding the property's land use regulations. The agreement outlines the duties, obligations, and benefits negotiated by both parties. An HRA may vary or supplement provisions related to zoning, subdivision, and/or development requirements. In exchange for the supplemental provisions, the property owner agrees to steps that will protect and/or enhance a heritage registered property. If approved by council, the HRA is registered in the land title office and carries forward with the land. As a note, the city currently has 17 active HRAs, majority of which allow some office space use within the residential area, and a large proportion of which also have a residential use component. The application before you was received, submitted to the city on November of last year. In addition to the neighborhood notification, the applicant also chose to hold a public open house, an event that was held this past Saturday on October 5th. In review of the heritage procedures bylaw, it states that a proposal sign is posted minimum of 10 days prior to council meeting where application is scheduled for consideration. This was not done as the application was following Council Policy 367, with the development notice signed to be posted 10 days prior to public hearing, which is a city normal development process. However, to resolve any discrepancy, an additional staff recommendation will be included at the end of my presentation. Due to timing, the city's Heritage Advisory Committee was not in operation, and in lieu of the committee review, the applicant required, was required to retain the services of a registered heritage consultant to review and comment on the proposed design. The applicant worked with staff to refine the proposal and final plans were received June of this year. Today, the applicant is seeking an initial consideration of the heritage asset to be designated heritage building and for the city to enter into an heritage revitalization agreement with the property owner. Should council give bylaw first reading, it will move forward to public hearing in the next few weeks. The property is located on the northern end of Abbott Street Heritage Conservation Area and is included in the Heritage Register. Located immediately south of the downtown urban center, the subject property is short walk to the Okanagan Lake, several waterfront parks downtown, and is on a major recreational and transit corridor. The neighborhood to the east, west, south is generally characterized, characterized by single detached residential dwellings, some of which have carriage houses, and to the north of the property is Mill Creek and Harvey Avenue Corridor. A number of surrounding properties are on the register, Heritage Register, and the area is very bikeable and walkable. Located at the corner of Abbott and Riverside Avenue, the subject property is zoned RU1 Large Lot Housing. The existing heritage building located on the property is known as the Murchison House and is defined as a Mediterranean Revival Style Home. The Murchison House represents a development period in Kelowna when undeveloped residential lots near Kelowna's downtown were being infilled with houses. This residential development includes, included new architectural designs and styles to the area throughout the 1930s, which included, contributed to the eclectic character of the Abbott Street Heritage Conservation Area. Based on the Heritage Consultant's report, the heritage value of the subject property and the heritage house lies in the building's unique design, its association with the prominent businessman Earl E. Murchison and his business Orchard City Motors, and for its unaltered exterior. The applicant's proposal adaptive reuse for the Murchison property consists of the following key objectives. First, to rehabilitate and reconfigure the existing house to accommodate office space. And second, to construct a new two-dwelling infill house on the subject property. The land use and development regulations for the HRA were developed by staff in collaboration with the applicant. In order to minimize potential impacts on the surrounding residential neighborhood, the, the HRA permit will limit the number of staff operating from the office space to five and spec, and specify hours of operations for office space Mondays to Saturdays, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The HRA permit will require an onsite parking and designated area for bike racks are provided, and a minimum number of onsite parking stalls for the office space be dedicated. As part of the HRA, the applicant has agreed to follow the heritage revitalization and restoration recommendations made by the heritage consultant. Any deviations or changes from the recommendations will first be reviewed and approved by the heritage consultant prior to proceeding. Additionally, the proposal, the proposed rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of the heritage building will be carried out consistent with national heritage standards. Finally, this process will be monitored by third-party registered heritage consultant to ensure the project adheres to standards. All this follows best management practices through various provincial requirements. By reorienting the, and bringing the Murchison House closer to both Riverside and Abbott Streets will make the heritage building as the most visible and primary feature on the property. The site plan shows the proposed new location of the rehabilitated, rehabilitated Murchison House and the location of the proposed new semi-detached infill housing. All vehicular access will be from Riverside. The two primary facades facing Abbott and Riverside will be restored to their 1930s appearance, which includes historically accurate materials. The relocation of the Murchison House will create space along the eastern portion of the lot for the construction of the semi-detached house. The height and mass of the new dwelling will be sensitive to adjacent neighboring properties as well as the surrounding area. There will be two units with three bedrooms in each unit that will be rentals. Based on the Heritage Consultant's report, the proposed infill maintains values of Murchison House by contributing to the eclectic character of the area. The infill house is distinct, yet compatible with the Murchison House. The contemporary design of the infill does not create confusion about what is historic and what is new. Equally important, the square, massing, flat roof, and black and white color scheme creates a cohesive, a cohesion between the two buildings. And finally, being relocated closer to, towards the corner of Abbott and Riverside allows the Murchison House to be the main focal feature of the property while the infill house becomes the backdrop. The application, the applicant has worked with staff to improve both the onsite and boulevard landscape design to reflect elements of the Abbott Street Recreational Corridor streetscape. Similar to the Abbott Street Recreational Corridor, the sidewalk along the Riverside Avenue will be inset with boulevard trees planted adjacent to the road, buffering pedestrians from the road and adding shade to the sidewalk. The applicant has provided some renderings. This one illustrates the proposed new location of the Murchison House and the location of the proposed new infill housing at the rear and as would be seen from the corner of Abbott and Riverside. And this rendering illustrates the project as would be seen from Riverside Avenue. The proposal to formally protect Murchison House through a heritage designation bylaw and to rehabilitate the heritage house and allow for the construction of a new house on the subject property through heritage revitalization agreement meets a number of development policies. The proposal achieves the objectives of adaptive reuse guidelines. Additionally, it meets several key heritage conservation area guidelines and OCP policies by the long-term protection of a heritage asset and meeting the sensitive infill objective. And finally, the modest amount of office space will add a degree of mixed use to the neighborhood. Staff recommend support for the proposed project and further recommendation that council waive the requirement to post a 10, a sign 10 days prior to council consideration as per the heritage process, procedures bylaw, recognizing that there will be the necessary time to post development notice sign information, the public, ahead of, ahead of the public hearing as per council policy 367. In summary, staff agree with the Heritage Consultant's professional opinion that the proposal represents a thoughtful and creative development that is a good model of conservation and evolution of a historic neighborhood. Thank you, Your Worship. This concludes my, the staff remarks.
Thank you very much. There are some questions for you now, starting with Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Barbara. That was great. One question, you did talk about onsite parking for office purposes. Now, in that, does that employ, I have two questions. Does that include just the employees there? What about the visitors who come to the office? Will there be adequate parking for everybody onsite? Because it's very tight, there's no place on the roads there to park.
Your Worship, the, the proposed space, designated space is for the staff. However, the, the, there's additional space that could be utilized on the property as long as the, the residents may not be using their, their, their lot, their stalls. There will be ample parking space along Riverside, but this is not an, this is not anticipated to have high traffic as the number of staff, number of staff members are limited to just five.
So, so that leads me to my second question. Ample parking onsite for the people living there, the people who are renting? There'll be no on-street parking?
The, the number of parking stalls that have been designated for the semi-detach meet the, the current bylaw requirements.
Counselor Wildridge. Thanks, Your Worship. Carrying on from where Counselor Singh was going with this, is the transportation impact assessment part of this development as well? Just to kind of quantify the clients that will be using the space as well, TIA?
Your Worship, to the best of my knowledge, the, a traffic impact study has not been done for this project.
Okay. And then secondly, just for my own clarification, is a residential component mandatory in conjunction with non-residential use for heritage structures like this heritage house? Is that a mandatory sticking point in the guideline?
Your Worship, we do have adaptive reuse guidelines that speak to recommendations for a combination of uses. So they reflect, the guidelines reflect an intent to have a residential component within, or combined with a commercial use. That can be accomplished, pardon me, accomplished and achieved in different ways. So whether it's in a different building or in the same building. And we have HRAs that have different combinations of that in the city.
Okay, perfect. And then in terms of mature trees, are we anticipating removal any of, of any of those?
There is one mature tree on the property, if I can find the one, bear with me one moment. And it is, this is a boulevard tree right here. This is a mature tree, however, that is not considered to be of value as it's known as the Tree of Heaven.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor DeHart.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a couple of questions here relating to some information that we, or some emails that we got. But first of all, I just wanted to expand on Counselor Wildridge's, Wildridge's comment because he asked if a study had been done. You said, "No." It wasn't required because there would be, only because of the small, the number of, of extra vehicles that would be there, or he didn't really get an answer as to, he said, "No," but I'm, I'm curious why not, I guess? And maybe we don't need it? Or did I miss something there when I was getting?
Assuming it doesn't meet the unit threshold.
That's what I meant. It was only five.
Is it such a small application?
Okay, no, no, that's what I thought, but I know when it said, "No," I was just curious.
Did I accurately reflect the opinion of staff there?
That's correct, Your Worship. It would be a much higher threshold to trigger.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, I just wanted to.
And so it's not the opinion of staff, there's thresholds in, in bylaw.
No, for sure, Your Worship.
State when one is needed.
I was just curious. I was pretty curious. I just wanted to ask the question because I know people had asked. Well, that's good. One question I did get asked, and I, I have it here, and I just wanted to ask you. It was, a public consultation was completed, but Cassan and Frakis were not, were not asked about that process. But that's because we're going to have a public hearing, correct? Like, we don't need that type of consultation right now, or can you explain that?
Yes, Your Worship. The, the way our, our development process language reads is that, as you can see, there says, it says "public notification." But what that is more accurate is a neighborhood consultation, and neighborhood consultation was conducted March of this year. The public notification and public hearing process is yet to come, to be set in the next few weeks.
Okay, so that's where these two organizations will. Yeah, that's what I thought. I just, because we have the letter, we thought, and I know a few of them are here in the audience, so they could get the correct information from you. Thank you.
Counselor Seaman.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, Barbara. And just a question with regards to the second structure that's onsite or the new structure that would go up. What would be the process for that to be approved, knowing that we're just doing the HRA today? Would that be done at a staff level, or would that come back for a building permit only?
That would come back as building permit.
And so just dealt with at the staff level? Or does it come to council?
That would be, it's part of the HRA agreement that the form and character is, is included as part of the HRA requirements, is the specifications that it has to adhere to. That's been worked into the agreement itself, and then it would go towards, to public, to building, building and permitting.
Okay, but I guess so with regards to your HRA, then the public, public hearing, the opportunity for the public to voice their opinions then? Thanks.
That is correct.
Barbara, just a couple of quick questions from me in regards to the, the commercial aspect of the proposal. I didn't see it in your presentation, but if it does go to public hearing, is it possible to find out how many other properties within the conservation area have commercial uses? And would you happen to know off the top of your head what, how many currently in that conservation area have commercial uses?
That is a report that was presented by, by staff, and I, I do know that the number of HRAs that are currently in the area is 17, and of that approximately half have commercial component, half use, half of it have, has a commercial component. And of that, there is a residential use component as well. I don't know the exact numbers, but I can easily get that.
Is it fair to say though that typically though, with residential being a component of that, would it be within the existing dwelling, or would it be in a standalone dwelling similar to this application?
There is a mixture. There is some that are residential within a building, within the heritage building, and there are others that are standalone, such as carriage houses.
Okay. Was it ever pitched to the applicant to just try and find or, or stick strictly with residential for the entire site? Was that ever, was that ever put on the table?
I'm afraid I'm not able to answer that.
And a question I can pose to the applicant perhaps if it moves to, to a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Seeing no further questions, is there a mover of staff recommendation? By Counselor DeHart, seconded by Counselor Dawn. Any further discussion? Seeing not, I think I'm comfortable moving it to public hearing, but I am curious to hear what the. Fair enough, ma'am, but you'll have an opportunity to address us at the public hearing, which is exactly why we're going through this process. So thank you very much for your input, but it's not the appropriate time. You'll still get your opportunity. So seeing no further comments, then I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? And this is strictly to move it to a public hearing, which is the entire reason for this whole process. All right, so that we have one bylaw, I think, or two. We've got two bylaws to deal with in regards to this. Item 3.18 is to give bylaw number 11946 first reading in order to designate 1781 Abbott Street and the building envelope as a heritage building, again for property located at 1781 Abbott Street.
Moved by Counselor Dawn, seconded by Counselor Seaman. The ballot number 11,946 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item 3.19 is to give bylaw number 11923 first reading in order to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement on the subject property, again for 1781 Abbott Street.
Moved by Counselor Dawn, seconded by Counselor Seaman. The ballot number 11,923 be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Sticking with Abbott Street, our next item, 3.20 is for property located at 1884 Abbott Street, and this is to consider rezoning the property from the RU1 Large Lot Housing Zone to the RU1C Large Lot Housing with Carriage House Zone to allow for the construction of a carriage house. Laura, back to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. The application was received in May of this year and we're through the regular development application review process. We're here today for initial consideration. The subject property is within the Abbott Street Heritage Conservation Area, is on the west side of Abbott Street, just north of Lake Avenue. The property and the surrounding area are designated single and two-unit residential in the official community plan. It's currently zoned RU1, and there are several properties that are zoned for carriage houses or two-dwelling housing in the vicinity. We can see here the subject property has an existing house towards the front of the property facing Abbott Street. It also backs onto Riverside Avenue to the west, which operates as a bit of a hybrid between a lane and a street, and the carriage house is proposed to be off of Riverside Avenue. So again, rezoning to RU1C to allow for a carriage house to be constructed at the back of the property, that would require demolition of the existing accessory building. All access would be off of Riverside Avenue to the west, and the applicant is proposing four onsite parking spaces, two in the garage in the carriage house structure, and then two surface stalls, and no variances have been identified at this time. Because the property is within the Heritage Conservation Area, a heritage alteration permit is required for the carriage house, and application has been submitted for that, and the proposal meets the, meets the design guidelines within that. So we can see here the existing one and a half story house at the front of the property, and then the proposed carriage house at the rear with garage on the bottom and then living space above. The application meets the intent of the official community plan urban infill policies by supporting compact urban form, sensitive infill, allowing for carriage houses, and in, all in an area where alternative transportation options are available as well as area amenities. And so staff recommend support of the proposed rezoning as it meets the intent of And so staff recommends support of the proposed rezoning as it meets the intent of the official community plan, and it would be forwarded to public hearing for consideration. And that concludes staff comment.
Thank you very much, Laura. Is there a mover of staff's recommendation? Moved by Counselor Dawn, seconded by Counselor Wildridge. Any discussion? Seeing not, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. So, sticking with that same property located at eighteen eighty-four Abbott Street, item three point two one is to give bylaw number, uh, one one nine four seven, uh, first reading in order to rezone the subject property from the RU one large lot housing zone to the RU one C large lot housing with carriage house zone.
Moved by Counselor Dawn, seconded by Counselor DeHart, the bylaw number eleven thousand nine hundred forty-seven be read a first time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
And Your Worship, all these bylaws that council gave first reading to, including the amendments to chapter eight of the zoning bylaw to do with parking, will go to public hearing October twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. Funnell. All right, bylaws for adoption that are development-related. Item four point one for property located eight ninety-four DeHart Road, uh, to adopt bylaw number one one seven four eight, in order to rezone the subject property from the RU one large lot housing zone to the RU six two dwelling housing zone.
Moved by Counselor Dawn, seconded by Counselor DeHart, the bylaw number eleven thousand seven hundred forty-eight be adopted.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item four point two for the properties located at nineteen twelve and nineteen fifteen Pacific Court, and to adopt bylaw number one one eight eight four in order to rezone the subject property from the RM three low-density multiple housing zone to the RM five medium-density multiple housing zone.
Moved by Counselor DeHart, seconded by Counselor Seben, the bylaw number eleven thousand eight hundred eighty-four be adopted.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. And item four point three for the property located at eleven ten Lawrence Avenue, and to adopt bylaw number one one eight nine nine in order to rezone the subject property from the RM three low-density multiple housing zone to the C four urban center commercial zone.
Moved by Counselor Seben, seconded by Counselor DeHart, the bylaw number eleven thousand eight hundred ninety-nine be adopted.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Now we are into non-development reports and related bylaws. The first we'll deal with is item five point one, and this is to consider a property tax exemption for those organizations that have met the qualifications as outlined in permissive tax exemption policy, number three two seven. And again, this is the twenty twenty permissive tax exemption bylaw eleven, uh, eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-six. And we have Angie Schumacher for this report. Angie, over to you whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, the City of Kelowna recognizes the significant value of volunteers, volunteer groups, and agencies to the spiritual, educational, social, cultural, and physical well-being of the community. A permissive tax exemption is shown on the slide as a means for council to support organizations such as these within the community that further council's objective to enhance the quality of life while delivering services economically to the citizens of Kelowna. In keeping with council's permissive tax exemption policy number three twenty-seven, staff received and reviewed applications from a variety of organizations over the summer of twenty nineteen. The twenty twenty taxation year will be the fifth in the five-year cycle for the City of Kelowna's permissive tax exemption process. For the twenty twenty taxation year, there are no changes to Schedule C hospitals. For the other schedules, staff are recommending the following changes. Removal of what was previously the Kelowna Free Methodist Church Main Street Community Church under the owners located on the slide, as the organization has sold the property. For Schedule B private schools, there was a name change for these two properties from the Waldorf School Association of Kelowna to Lakeside Educational Society of Kelowna. For Schedule D, special needs housing, the addition of Resurrection Resource Society at the two properties listed, and a reclassification of the Kelowna Child Care Society to Schedule E for social services. For Schedule E, social services, the addition of Starbright Children's Development Center, reclassification of the Kelowna Child Care Society, and a removal of Pathways Ability Society on a City of Kelowna lease, as there's been a change in use. The building is currently empty and slated for demolition and redevelopment to long-term housing. For Schedule F, public park recreation ground, public athletic recreational, other nonprofit societies, reduce the exemption, exemption for the Central Okanagan Small Boat Association for caretaker residence, which rent is collected, and for third-party rentals. For Schedule G, cultural organizations, addition of OCCA Communities Association, removal of the Okanagan Regional Library, City of Kelowna Library Society, as this property has a full statutory exemption under section two twenty-one D of the Community Charter as a public library. For Schedule H, other nonprofit societies, remover, removal of the Father Dolestric Columbus two thousand nine society, as the property has been sold for redevelopment. Tax exemption requests are not being recommended. BC Life Builders Rehabilitation Society, Rehabilitation Society, provides affordable housing, meals, and other training services in a family homestyle setting. There's no maximum length of stay for the tenants, therefore criteria number eight is not met. Habitat for Humanity, in order to purchase the home, residents of the home pay interest-free mortgage to Habitat for Humanity in order to purchase the home, so residents of the home or generally long-term occupants, there is no maximum length of stay. Again, criteria number eight is not met. Mennonite Central Committee, or MCC, operates a thrift store of which proceeds are used to support both local and global needs, but Kelowna residents are not the primary beneficiaries of the service, therefore criteria number six is not met. The estimated twenty twenty municipal tax impact related to permissive exemptions is one point eight million. Your Worship, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Angie. Counselor Seben.
Thank you, Worship. Angie, you know, uh, the Starbright Child Development Center has a secondary property now. So they had their main property on Elm and Bernard, and now they've purchased the church next door. So that will, and it's still for the same use, that will still come under the tax exemption, correct?
Yeah, this is just for the changes that are to any of the schedules. Any existing ones on the schedules, we're also recommending in the council report to accept the bylaw with all of the rest of the permissive tax exemptions already in existence.
Thank you.
So no, uh, further questions? Is there a mover of the recommendation? Moved by Counselor Dawn, seconded by Counselor Wildridge. Any discussion? Seeing not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Angie. We have, uh, bylaw now to deal with in regards to those tax exemptions now. This is item five point two on the agenda, and to give bylaw number one one nine three six for second and third readings in order to exempt from taxation certain lands and improvements situated in the City of Kelowna. Again, this is, uh, the twenty twenty, uh, permissive tax exemption bylaw.
Moved by Counselor DeHart, seconded by Counselor Seben, the bylaw number eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-six be read a first, second, and third time.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item five point three on the agenda is to update the bylaws supporting the regional emergency program and to be consistent with both current legislation as well as current operational practices. These are proposed amendments to the RDCO Preparation for Emergencies bylaw, number four eight nine, uh, nineteen ninety-one. And we have our fire chief here today, Chief Whiting, over to you.
Thank you, and I've got, uh, Deputy Chief Follock, uh, here with me as well, who manages the emergency program. So this bylaw is an update to our current establishment bylaw through the regional district that was drafted in nineteen ninety-one and is considerably out of date. So I've worked closely with, uh, Brian Ridden and, uh, the city staff to ensure that the bylaw, the establishment bylaw now meets, uh, regulatory requirements, including better describing the service, updating jurisdictional names, uh, inclusion of additional cost recovery methods, and conforming with current legislation. So the passing of fourteen forty-three allows, uh, an update to the establishment bylaw. The second portion of the motion is to pass a resolution that delegates the authority of the, of council, um, through the Emergency Program Act to the regional district, as we currently do now, so we can operate the regional program. Both these, uh, the res, uh, the bylaw and the resolution are consistent with, um, past practice and best practices that we've, uh, had in our regional program to date, and just better reflect, uh, our current legislative framework.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to the chief at this point? Seeing not, um, Counselor Seben is moving, and Cas, Counselor Wildridge is seconding the, uh, recommendations. And, uh, seeing no further comments, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. You too. Uh, all right. Counselor items. Today we'll start with Counselor DeHart.
Thank you, Worship. Well, it was a really busy week last week because it was Small Business Week. That meant that the Kelowna Chamber of Commerce had an event just about every day, so I managed to go to several of them. Uh, also, the BC Chamber was in our city with their conference, so that was, that was really cool. So, um, they had lots of events. Um, there was a luncheon, which, uh, Your Worship, you spoke at, that was great. Uh, there was events during the week, plus there was a business walk around several areas of the city. So all in all, it was a, a really busy week, but I think everybody, uh, got a lot of it, out of it, and enjoyed it very much. Um, oh, and because, oh, I guess I should say publicly, the reason I was at all the events is because I'm the appointee for the Kelowna Chamber of Commerce for the City of Kelowna. Thank you.
Counselor Dawn, Counselor Seben.
Just a quick note, Your Worship, just, um, yesterday was the finale of the Central Okanagan Soccer Association wind-up, so many people, and it looks like probably yourself and myself as well.
Oh, yeah, two, both days.
Uh, at, uh, Mission Recreation or Mission Sportsfield, so, uh, congrats to all the kids on another great season. Some carry on the winters, some take a break and do other things, but, uh, great day, great, uh, great event, and I don't know, it was a busy place, that's for sure.
Counselor Seben.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, two things. One, Your Worship, I represented yourself and our council, my council colleagues at the Sisters in Vigil, uh, ceremony at the Kelowna Friendship Center Friday evening. Uh, very emotional with the loss of so many lives. Um, it, the emotions are still very raw, uh, in, in the Aboriginal community, and, uh, that was very apparent. Um, secondly, Your Worship, I'd like to thank my council colleagues, uh, for supporting my request to bring about a motion voicing opposition to Quebec's new bill, seat twenty-one. The motion will be, that, my motion will be on the agenda on October twenty-first, and I will speak, um, in greater detail, provide my feelings as to why I felt it was so important that we stand up against this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Seben. Counselor Wildridge.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just actually wanted to give a bit of a view until later this week. Ending Us and Them is, um, coming up on Wednesday evening, um, at the Rotary Center, which is the film, um, addressing homelessness and stigma of homelessness in our community. So for those that, um, weren't able to catch it last fall, um, it's upcoming on Wednesday. And Counselor Seben, very happy to see that motion coming forward and, uh, look forward to the discussion on the twenty-first. Thank you.
Public hearing tomorrow. Uh, that's the only reminder I have at this particular time, so, uh, unless there are any others, we will call this meeting adjourned.